Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassas a common council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have roll call, please?
Alderman Collier.
Here.
Alderman Zalinski.
Here.
Alderman Grady.
Here.
Alderman Benner.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Sevenick.
Here.
Alderman Kruger has been excused.
The first item on the agenda this evening is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard this evening? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the report of department head staff and consultants. We have Police Chief Steika here to introduce Mark Mothee, who has been promoted to the investigative lieutenant position.
Come on up, Barb. I apologize for doing it this week. If you recall from last agenda, this is something we wanted to do during Police Week, but there was a family emergency at Mark's house, but we still wanted to do this. What we found is that there's been questions from council members and other people in the community from time to time, not knowing what's going on in the police department. And while we tried to do it all during Police Week because of that, we weren't able to. So to put a name with a face, that's why we brought Mark back here today. So thanks for obliging us with this. We'll be really quick on it. Give you a little bit about Mark's background, though. He started his career actually in the town of Manassas in February of 1986, then came over to us in July of 1987, I believe it was. So don't say nothing ever. We didn't get anything from the town ever. We got Mark.
Not all good or bad.
He took a whole variety of different positions. He served as a field training officer. He became an OIC in 1994. And then in 2002, he was promoted to investigator. He's received all sorts of different specialized training, everything from evidence tech to a bunch of specialized training. One of the ones that I think he's most proud about is a death investigation school that's put on by Southern Police Institute. We actually went down to Louisville, Kentucky for a week, which is something that most investigators in this area really haven't had that experience. He was Officer of the Year for us in 2014, and one of Mark's biggest passions is he certainly gives back to the community. The biggest one that he does is Special Olympics. If you've ever been to a polar plunge, the torch run, a golf outing, you're probably going to see Mark there. In fact, his efforts were rewarded in 2013. He was actually nominated and received an award for being the Volunteer of the Year, and that was a statewide honor. So his name is actually on a plaque and part of a very elite group of people that have done considerable amount of work for Special Olympics. He also went to five years running in the International Conference. So the law enforcement torch run holds a conference and a torch run somewhere in the country, and actually internationally, Mark went to five of those. His wife Sue is joining him today, and Mark also has two daughters, granddaughters, who couldn't be here tonight. So with that, I introduce Mark Mothee. And what we'll do is actually have Sue pin his lieutenant bars on.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mark. Now that he's out of the room.
So easy break.
Yes.
Think a well-deserved promotion. The next thing we have on the agenda is a presentation by Bob Munt. Bob is the new CEO of the Fox Cities Chamber. Like to tell us a little bit about himself and then a little bit about what the Fox Cities Regional Partnership has been working on this year as well.
Thank you, Mayor. I first got a little bit nervous when all the police officers came in here. I was wondering, I'm new to the community, but wow. Well, Mayor and common council members, first of all, good evening, and thank you for allowing us time on your busy agenda to give an update of the Fox Cities Regional Partnership Report. As mentioned, my name is Bob Munt, and I'm the new president and CEO of the Fox Cities Regional Chamber and the Regional Partnership. And with me tonight, I have Kip Golden, who's Chair of our Regional Partnership, Dan Ferris, who's Chair of the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, Mark Ramlo, who's our Vice President for Public Policy for the Chamber, and then Adrian Palm, who's the Director of our Pulse Young Professionals Program. And I might mention that both Dan and Kip are members, are residents here in Manassas, and I think Kip serves on the redevelopment authority. Is that correct? Yeah. So very involved in the community. So appreciate having them here with us tonight. I come to you from Iowa, where I worked with the Council Bluffs Area Chamber of Commerce, and we were part of the Greater Omaha Economic Development Partnership. The areas that I worked in were business recruitment expansion, talent development, small business, and overall Chamber management areas. I'm very pleased to be working here in the Fox Cities region as part of the partnership. It's incredibly successful partnership, I believe, and the communities themselves are just wonderful. I've been here for five weeks, and no one has been mean to me, so that's good. I'm certainly here to learn from all of you, as I am new here today, and I welcome your feedback, your input, and your assistance, really, in anything that we're doing together here to build these Fox Cities. As you're aware, the Chamber and the Regional Partnership put in place about five years ago a pretty aggressive work plan aimed at meeting some very key five-year objectives. And today, we can probably say that we've met or exceeded those objectives in supporting the creation of over 1,250 new jobs, primary jobs here, and by providing assistance to those 16 companies that have created those jobs, direct assistance. And this translates really to an annual increase in payroll in the Fox Cities of over $73 million. So it has a fairly significant impact on us as well. We're currently working on several others right now, and so hopefully we can announce some of those also in the future. Our progress can also be measured in other ways. In connecting the business with relevant resources, we've created, we've implemented over 100 visits, in-person visits annually with corporate leadership in the areas, to the area's primary employers. These meetings establish working relationships for future assistance, they explore expansion opportunities, provide resources to those companies, and identify issues that impede company growth plans. We also are supporting our workforce and attraction and retention by understanding the crucial role that access to workforce plays in our economic development. The Chamber and the Partnership partnered with 26 Fox Cities companies the past two years to host over 235 college students from 21 universities to host our award-winning Talent Upload Program. The program seeks to directly address employer needs around IT, engineering, finance, logistics, and supply chain management, and boasts a 63% placement rate among those attendees. We also support a lot of placemaking activities here in the Fox Cities, including the Pulse Young Professionals Program, whose events like Bazaar After Dark, Open Air Market, The Artery, Urban Market, YP Week events and activities create experiences for existing talent and showcase the unique assets of our community. These people visiting from outside our area, as well as those current residents who may need a further refresher course on just how special we are here. On July 20th, in fact, we are very excited to be working with the City of Manassas and Boom to host the next Bazaar After Dark event here in Manassas, which to date has brought in over 4,000 people to each one of those events. So we're expecting a big turnout for that here in Manassas on the 20th. Enhancing the visibility of the Fox Cities is also a big thing of what we would like to do and continue to do. Working with our partners at New North, our I-41 Collaborative, the Fox Cities Partnership has made more than 80 contacts with site selectors around the country, basically promoting the Fox Cities. We want to continue to expand and promote that awareness, and in fact, our website visits over the past year annually have increased by 20%. We, of course, cannot do this alone. Our efforts require collaboration between businesses, between government, education, and nonprofits, and so we'll be embarking on Phase Two of the Fox Cities Chamber and Regional Partnership Plan for continued growth and development here soon. As we move forward, the next multi-year effort will continue our momentum throughout the last five years, and we anticipate this effort will include strategies to address those critical needs as identified in our research. Those, again, continue to be the increased emphasis on talent and workforce development to include our expanded Talent Upload, our targeted and refined K-12 initiatives, and training for displaced and non-traditional workers. Renewed focus on existing industry retention and expansion, again, looking at how do we keep our existing businesses growing and healthy and viable? What can we do to make that happen? Also looking at enhancing the quality of life with things like Talent Upload, things like Pulse Young Professionals, the Bazaar After Dark, continuing to grow and expand those types of events and activities so we keep our people here and keep our young people engaged. And lastly, certainly not least, really enhancing the visibility of the Fox Cities and who we are, not only in this region, but in this area of the country. Looking at internal, external marketing through, again, New North, through I-41 Collaborative, and a lot of other external menus as well. All of these things are interrelated and depend on one another for the overall success of the region. Over the next several weeks, the Partnership will be refining our tactics and resources to continue our success. The Fox Cities Chamber and the Regional Partnership are committed to renewing our efforts and to continue to grow this Fox Cities region. We'll be working with our partners like you to implement an aggressive plan moving forward. So on behalf of the Partnership and the Chamber, I want to say thank you for all the things that you've done in the past. I've been informed that this is a great group to work with. I have no reason to doubt that. And so, again, thank you very much for everything that you've done in helping us to be successful. We look forward to working with you in the future to continue those successes. So, again, my name is Bob Munt. I'm the president and CEO of the Fox Cities Chamber and the Regional Partnership. Our partners are here today, tonight, so thank you again for everything that you do.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Munt before he leaves? You're not going to let him get off that easy, are you?
I'm new here yet.
Well, thank you for coming tonight.
I haven't had my Kevlar on yet, so.
Thank you for coming tonight and introducing yourself, and I'm sure we'll be seeing more of you and your team in the future.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Buck. Thank you for working with us. I appreciate all your help as well. Thank you, guys.
Great. Thanks. Item three is the Minutes and Communications. Do we have a motion to receive the Minutes and Communications tonight? Alderman Sevenick?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to move to receive Minutes A through K and Communications L through O.
Is there a second?
There is.
Is the motion a second? Is there any discussion? Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. Just, let's see, the Communication M, Building Inspector Housing Specialist. With her coming on, I'm excited to see this, but where, so she'll be located just as it is now them being hired out in with community development. Will Code Enforcement now be relocated with, conjoining with her at the same location? I know that was discussed when this came forward to council. You weren't here at the time, but it's discussed that he would be hand-in-hand with her to...
Grab your mic.
Yes, the Code Enforcement Officer will be actually housed at both the police station and New City Hall location. The Building Inspector, they'll be actually sharing a space, so they'll be very close together, working collaboratively.
And with the hiring effort, did the contract stay the same as when it came forward to add, I think, just a couple more vacation days or something, or did the contract differ from...
Nope. The offer was what was approved by the council.
Okay.
As amended.
And with it being, I hate seeing these two positions, Building Inspector and Housing Specialist, but Building Inspector will be her first priority, and then this will be filtered in as a Housing Specialist?
That's how we anticipate, yeah. Especially to start, she'll be focusing primarily on building inspection, plan review, and some code compliance, working with our Code Enforcement Officer. But part of that job is also managing the revolving loan fund program. But we'll start with the building inspection and get that up and running.
Yeah. That's good. Thank you.
Sure.
And another question on the replacement of the high-speed copier. So I emailed assessment about this to get some little more clarity on it, but so the monies that were allocated for this was $8,000 from the budget, and we decided on this cheaper, instead, it's cheaper to, I guess, purchase the high-speed copier than the cost of the five-year lease. So we're taking the difference of, I don't know, $6,966 that wasn't budgeted for, and we're taking that from the money that we save by not having an administrative service director position? Is that how I read that?
So there's money in the administrative services budget, and as we were going through this, we noticed that we could save about $5,000 by purchasing rather than leasing the copier as we had originally anticipated doing. Copier we have right now was actually purchased, I believe, under the former mayor, if I remember right. So it's definitely due to be replaced, and we thought since the money was in that budget, it may not have been budgeted for a copier, but was there, that it made sense to save that $5,000 by purchasing rather than leasing. I wanted to make you aware of it. We have not signed a contract yet. If people have heartburn and would rather lease, we can still do that, but it was our opinion that it made sense to save those funds and go this route, since the money was there.
I'm no expert on high-speed copiers, but is it, how, what's usually the lifespan of something like this? I know technology is ever-changing and...
Five to six years, it sounds like.
So it's about the same as, okay.
Yeah. This is actually replacing, we have a slower-speed color copier, but it's a fairly high-speed color copier on the second floor, as well as a high-speed black-and-white on the third floor. This will replace both of those copiers, so we'll be merging those into one machine when we move to the new building.
When we were leasing it, did we, I don't know if there's ongoing maintenance with these, or...
We have a maintenance agreement on top of...
Oh, on top of the, okay.
Yes. So on top of the lease or the purchase, and that's what we have right now. It's quite expensive to have the maintenance agreement. Do you remember what it went up, Chief Steika? Yeah, I don't remember either, but it was like a half or more again of what it used to be this year when we had to renew it for the current copier.
That just scared me at first, because you see this, and I don't want to see personnel money going to...
True.
Purchasing a copier, yeah, so.
Nope. And I agree, but since the money was there, to waste $5,000 on a lease didn't seem practical either.
No.
Just wanted to make you aware of it. Alderman Sevenick?
Geez, I never thought that I'd be discussing a copier, but here we are. The proper protocol for this is that it should have been a decision that came before this body through the IT Committee, and I don't know if you have that IT Committee working yet, or what's going on, or why you don't have that going.
The IT Committee has not been working. It's been in the budget. We have not had an IT Committee meeting for several years now.
Okay, because that's where it should come from, with the recommendation. Some of the same issues I have that Alex had is, you know, the repair issues. Those can be very expensive, and the maintenance agreements. And I think we could possibly be hurt by not having a very good maintenance agreement. From what I understand, cartridges are then picked up. What are we going to do now that we don't, when we need new cartridges or the old ones?
The maintenance agreement is the same whether we lease or purchase it.
Okay, that's good to know. Also, too, protocol here, again, is that this was not a budgeted item. It's coming from another budget, and actually, one is not related whatsoever to the other. I think it needs to be on the agenda specifically, and it would require a two-thirds vote. Not that I'm opposed or against, but I think that that's the process that has to be made.
We've allowed department heads to use funds within their departments.
Which is inappropriate.
Well, okay, then we will likely not have a copier by the time we move to the new building.
Well, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that, you know, well, not my mistake. I'm not the administrator here. I would have had this in order for the council to be voting on this matter. I'm happy that you did bring it forward, because if you didn't, we probably would have never known. So you're, you know, you're being upfront with us.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate.
But I'm just letting you know that there are protocols that we need to now start following.
So what...
And when something's not budgeted...
It is within the budget.
And if it comes from another budget that has nothing to do with one or the other, it needs to come before this council, because we are the keepers of the dollars up here.
Past practice has been, when it's within a department head's budgets, we allow them to, to look at those as a pool, and that's how we've done it in the past.
It's not the right way to do it, yeah.
And if we don't do that, we will, if you want us to do it by line by line by line, we will have to include...
These don't come up line by line by line all the time, but we got to stop stealing from other budgets and doing what we want up here, because it's our job to look out for the dollars here.
Okay.
And...
We are not stealing from another budget. I don't want you to call it that way.
Well, maybe I used the wrong word, but you're taking from another budget?
We are...
You're taking from a budget that wasn't used because of a personnel, it was a salary, basically.
Sure. So would you, would you like it to come back? I can bring it back.
I think it needs to.
Okay.
I appreciate you bringing it forward and being upfront about it, and what's the word I'm looking for? Transparent. Thank you.
So, so what is the protocol that you would like to see things come back?
Well, you need to put it in as a motion for us to...
No, no. In the future for items. Because if, if someone works an extra three hours in parks versus cemeteries, we have no control over that.
That's a little different. That's salaries.
So if we have...
You have to come up with a better example.
Well, if, if we buy a different lawnmower than what was in the budget, is that coming back?
Still lawnmower, but you're, this is a copy machine and salary from...
So the things that you would like...
Salaries. Two different worlds.
The things that you would like to come back, or if they come, if they go between...
If they're extreme here.
No, just let me ask if this is what you'd like to see come back? If it's the salary group versus the, what would you call it, supplies group?
Supply capital items or whatever.
So, okay, so if it's within the budgeted group, if it's within the equipment group, we have some flexibility there, as long as it doesn't go into the salary, and if it's in the salaries, we have... So what happens if someone...
Well, if you want to, I mean, if you want to be technical and debate me, then we will have to create a policy, but you know where I'm coming from.
I'm just, is that what you're looking for, though?
I'm just looking for...
You don't want salaries to be intermixed with, with something else that's not a salary, is what you're asking for?
In this case, yes.
That, well, that's, I just want to know in the future if that's what we're looking for, and that's what I'll do in the future, if that's what you're doing.
I think that's what we need to do in the future.
That's fine. I can do that.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussion? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the same questions, Alderman Zalinski and Sevenick had, but I have one for the fire chief on the FEMA SCBA grant award. This isn't oxygen tanks...
Hold on. Hold on. Is that on the communications?
It's on communications.
Yeah, joint finance.
It's part of the consent agenda. Let's talk about that during the consent agenda section. It's on number seven on the consent agenda as well.
Okay. I thought it was number, or letter G here. Okay. Put it on the consent then.
Yeah, it's number seven there as well, so let's do it there.
Okay. And then something I want to bring forward to the council, and I'm glad we hired our Building Inspector Housing Specialist, but this time around, I would, I would like to see some paperwork generated with a monthly report on things that we turn in and where we're at with them and what level of, you know, the final process that we're looking for, if it's a court situation, or if it's, if we're in compliance, I would like to see some, something generated from that department. And also, I think we need to have, and we'll let the council weigh in on this at some point, but I think the Code Enforcement also, too, we turn in different things, and it'd be nice to have a document that says, yeah, this is closed, this is done, so we can refer to that one. Usually, we get these on a complaint basis, and I would certainly like to have a record of these different things, so we'll see what the council direction wants here, and hopefully we could produce some sort of a monthly report for these departments. Thank you. But I'm glad somebody's on board. We've been working at this for, with Alderman Zalinski, Ann Zalinski, for about three years.
Alderman Zal, yeah, Alderman Zalinski. Alderman Collier.
Part of the family. I understand where Alderman Taylor's coming from, but I'd hope that he would at least realize that it might take him 90 days even to get their feet wet and get involved as far as just going out and writing a ticket and hoping something gets done right away. I don't see that happening, because if you go there with, if you go in front of a court, you better have a lot of ammunition in a lot of cases, otherwise it'll probably get thrown out. We're trying this new in Manassas. I want it to be successful, but I want it to be fair, so I don't want one or five people putting in 75% of the complaints and thinking that they should be zeroed in first. They should have a policy. You should let them do their job, and then we should see where they're going. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
I also said, Alderman Collier, that I would bring this forward to the, to the full body of the council here, and we'll figure out what the body wants to do. But in the past, it's been very sloppy, and it's been, there's been no, nothing to follow a track record. Pardon me? Oh, I thought somebody was talking to me. I was looking through my bifocals and I saw your mouth moving, so I didn't know what was going on.
Personal attack.
Okay, let's, let's move on.
There is no personal attack up here.
Okay, let's move on.
I'm just telling you, but this Alderman has experience. I have the oldest district in town, and things aren't getting done.
Mr. Taylor, point of order. This is not on the agenda.
This time around, with this situation, I want things to happen. I'm just answering a question here, Mayor.
I just said that's not on the agenda, the point of order.
Yeah, and the other was that?
Let's move on. Okay. Any further discussion on the Minutes and Communications? All those in favor?
Right.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The consent agenda has seven items this evening. The common council minutes to approve from May 15th, the administrative committee recommendations from May 15th, to accept the Post Crescent Media as the official city newspaper for 2017 through 2018, the Board of Public Works recommendations from May 15th for a payment to Summers Construction for new street construction on Province Terrace in the amount of $184,267.69. The recommendation to award contract 2017-02 New Street Construction to MCC, Inc. for $652,472.49. The recommendation to award contract unit 2017-05 The Memorial Building Boiler Replacement to Mechanical Technologies, Inc. for $27,500. Then the Niaman Asha Joint Fire Commission recommendation from May 24th for the Regional Fire Department Hiring Process Agreement with Fox Valley Technical College, and then the Niaman Asha Joint Finance and Personnel Committee recommendation of June 1st that the FEMA Grant Award of $283,468 requiring a minimum 10% local funding match with the grant to assist in funding the replacement of the department's self-contained breathing apparatus system at a total cost of $368,275. After the grant, the total net cost to the Department of the SCAB, SCBA system is $368,275 less $257,699, or 110,567. City of Nina's share is $65,561, and Manassas' share is $45,015 for the purchase, purpose of purchasing this in 2018 with funds to come from Niaman Asha Fire Rescue's 2018 CIP budget. Now, Kevin, I want to know if someone actually made that exact motion.
Yes, it was.
Do we have any items that anyone would like separated this evening? Don't you want item seven separated, Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
I, I took care of that. Anyone else?
[inaudible]
I'm just telling you, uh, but this Alderman has experience. I have the oldest district in town. And, uh, things aren't getting done.
Mr. Taylor, point of order. This is not on the agenda.
I want things to happen. I'm just answering a question here, Mayor.
I just said that's not on the agenda, the point of order.
Yeah, and the other was that?
Let's move on. Okay. Any further discussion on the minutes in communications? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
The consent agenda has seven items this evening. The common council minutes to approve from May 15th. The administrative committee recommendations from May 15th to accept the Post Crescent Media as the official city newspaper for 2017 through 2018. The Board of Public Works recommendations from May 15th for a payment to San Summers Construction for new street construction on province terrace in the amount of $184,267.69. The recommendation to award contract 2017-02 New Street Construction to MCC, Inc. for $652,472.49. The recommendation to award contract unit 2017-05 The Memorial Building Boiler Replacement to Mechanical Technologies, Inc. for $27,500. Then Niaman Asha Joint Fire Commission recommendation from May 24th for the regional fire department hiring process agreement with Fox Valley Technical College. And then Niaman Asha Joint Finance and Personnel Committee recommendation of June 1st that the FEMA grant award of $283,468 requiring a minimum 10% local funding match with the grant to assist in funding the replacement of the department's self-contained breathing apparatus system at a total cost of $368,275. After the grant, the total net cost to the Department of the SCAB, SCBA system is $368,275 less $257,699 or 110,567. City of Nina's share is $65,561. And Manasha's share is $45,015 for the purchase, purpose of purchasing this in 2018 with funds to come from Niaman Asha Fire Rescue's 2018 CIP budget. Now, Kevin, I wanna know if someone actually made that exact motion.
Yes, it was.
Do we have any items that anyone would like separated this evening? Don't you want item seven separated, Mr. Taylor? I, I took care of that. Anyone else? Seeing no one else? Alderman Sevick?
Seeing there are no further ones, Mayor, I'll move for the approval of the common council minutes. The administration committee's recommendation to accept the bids for the Post Crescent to be the city official newspaper. Board of Public Works payments, the, uh, and recommended awards. And three, four, and five. And the, uh, Niaman Asha Fire Rescue Joint Fire Commission recommends the approval of the regional fire department hiring process agreement with the Fox Valley Technical College.
There's a motion, a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Item seven is acceptance of the FEMA grant. I don't know if Chief Cologne would like to tell us a little bit about this. This is a, a pretty big deal to the fire department as well as to both cities. And I think that people would like to know a little bit about it.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. The FEMA grant is one that after 9/11 back in 2001 was created to assist fire departments in some of the, um, equipment that they lacked or that they needed to be, that needed to be replaced. And so since that was 16 years ago, grant funding has really dwindled and there is not as much available as there used to be. Also, the timeframe always used to be March every year where you could apply. So you knew every year in March that you could apply for a grant. And, um, whether or not you'd get it or not, but every March you could apply. Um, over the past couple of years, that has even come and gone. Really, we don't know when they're gonna have a grant available or not. Sometimes now it's in September, sometimes it's in March. Um, I think two years ago, they'd never even had a opportunity to apply for a FEMA grant. So, um, when the opportunity came up in the middle of April, beginning of April, um, we thought it was a good opportunity to try and go for our SCBAs. And the window is very short, so you do not have a lot of time to prepare. And there's a lot of work. Uh, Shift Commander Schultz, uh, worked with Tara and Victor and put this grant together, worked with our SCBA committee who does all the testing and, and things with our current equipment and put a plan together. Um, they talked to different, um, departments that received this grant, which is very few and far between. So, um, we got word just a few weeks ago that, um, we were still in the running and then got the call about a week ago um, from the state saying that we were awarded the grant. So it's very rare that, um, this amount of money, um, is given in a grant process. And so we're very lucky to get, we did not get the whole $300,000. Um, but going through some of the process, we learned that some of the equipment we had been asking for in 2019, if we were to add that into the, um, the grant proposal, we were gonna get turned down. So that's why there's, that's why we weren't awarded the whole thing because some of those items would have not been granted for us. So we left them out. Um, so we got about as much as we were gonna be able to get with, um, with the amount of equipment we had. So the total award was $283,000. So we received almost two-thirds of, of what our CIP would be for 2019. So, um, I think Shift Commander Schultz did a great job in, in preparing for this on short notice. And there was a lot of scrambling. He did a lot of things on his days off to make it work, calling FEMA, making sure that we had everything in order because it is a rare opportunity. So is there any questions that I can help answer?
I must thank you for, uh, finding this grant and getting the money. It's important that we have opportunities to indirectly save money by getting this and, and, and going forward. And the $10,491 return on it is unreal. So I hope we find a way to come up with the money and vote on this and make this a positive thing for both Niaman Asha. Thank you.
Alderman Sevick?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the FEMA grant award. I guess that should be good with what was read earlier.
So motion a second. Further discussion?
Yeah, Mayor. Um, this is a committee that I'm on. And, um, our current self, self-contained breathing apparatus will be basically expiring soon. So this couldn't come, like Arnie said, at a better time for us. Also, the equipment that we currently have is going to be sold. There are other departments, you know, small townships, um, that would be interested in purchasing that. Um, so that'll help. So I just, uh, kinda wanna tail off what, uh, Alderman Collier had said that, I mean, how fortunate that we are to get a $283,000 grant for this and to also have now newer technology that's coming forward. Um, we'll have, uh, better state-of-the-art, uh, breathing equipment for our employees.
Alderman Zalinski?
Just curious, what is it specifically used for? Obviously, in your situations, what do you call for?
Sure. So the SCBAs are worn by firefighters pretty much on any call. Um, even, can be an EMS call if there's carbon monoxide or some type of poisoning. Um, but on any type of fire alarm, any type of any other emergency call, they're wearing their SCBAs. So it's a, a air pack that contains 45, um, 100 pounds of air. And then it's, um, connected to a face piece or a face mask that, um, of course, has the electronics, um, are used for, um, once the air pressure gets to a certain level, around 1,000 PSI, then the bell, the bell sounds to let them know that it's time to exit the building. Um, so those are, for, for the most part, that's what they're used for. We also have air packs that, um, our rapid intervention team uses. And so it's a, a team that sits outside the building. And if somebody gets in trouble, they also carry an air pack with extra spare face pieces and hoses and, um, can take it in to, um, perform a rescue. So, uh, those are really what they're used for almost in every case, every call that we go on.
Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Uh, is this used for the dive team at all?
These are not used for the dive team. They're the difference, SCUBA and our, uh, SCBA air packs are two diff, they're, the bases are the same, um, using them for underwater versus using them in a structure fire. Um, same concept, but they're two different types of pieces of equipment.
Okay. And do we fill those with a same system or not?
Correct. We, that's the only thing that is the same is that we can use, um, our air system to top off both our dive, um, tanks and our SCBAs.
Okay. Certainly, I appreciate, uh, going out, uh, it was a 2019 budget replace, a year and a half early, but, uh, with a grant like that, we can't afford not to. Is there an adjustment, uh, out of this budget that'll pick up this money?
We're, we're allowed to make those purchases even in 2018. So it will, should not affect anything in 2017. Um, as Alderman Sevick stated, we, we, we are just starting to bring in some of our vendors just to see what's out there. Um, I think once we get the approval to go ahead, we're able to have those vendors come back and then have them evaluate our equipment. Because then there will be some resale value, being that we're, they're still usable for, um, you know, a year and a half or whatever it is. Most departments, um, volunteer departments, they'll use it and they'll just continue using it. They'll, without the certification that we use. Um, but the other thing is too, is that we'll be able to save, um, the maintenance fees over the next few years because we currently in the budget put in about 5,000 for maintenance, um, which they'll be under warranty. And so we will, we'll save that an extra 5,000 too for maintenance in that first year.
So somebody else is gonna buy the system from us and use it?
Somebody, what happens is the, the vendor usually buys it back. And then once the vendor buys it back, everything is on, on the vendor. So they can do with whatever they want with it. Um, but our masks are, you know, they're $800 apiece. And, um, then they'll look at the, the bottles. And then they'll look at the harness itself that the bottle stood in. So those are still usable. They can, um, it's the bottles that really are the problem that, once they're hydrotested a certain amount of times, we can't hydrotest them any further.
I'm glad there's a middleman, the vendor in between. I wouldn't be comfortable with selling this to another department.
Correct.
Thanks. Thank you. And, uh, what's it, Schultz?
Shift Commander Schultz did the grant, yeah.
Please note to him that this is well accepted.
I will do that. Thank you.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. What is the life expectancy of the new equipment?
So the life expectancy on any SCBA is about 15 years. And so, and again, it's because of how many times they can get hydrotested. So, um, once that 15-year cycle is done, um, then it's another, you know, another way of trying to find or to replace those, you know, those pieces of equipment.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no other discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll from May 18th through June 1st. And Ms. Hessman has a note for us here that we had a slight adjustment on this.
Um, yeah, just the total should be, um, I had a void check that should have been negative. So the total should be $1,325,746.53.
So with that, do we have a, a motion? Alderman Sevick?
Seeing the chair is not here, I'll take this one. Mayor, at this time, I'll move for accounts payable and payroll for the term of 5/18/2017 to 6/1 of 2017 in the amount of $1,325,746.53.
Is there a second? There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I'd like to remove check number 57790 in the amount of $50 made out to Jeff Nichols. I'll be abstaining from that check.
Is there any other discussion? Alderman Zalinski?
Yes, thank you. Uh, just a quick question. Uh, check number 57683 on, I think it's page three. What is the claim against city from Daniel Larson? Was it like dispute or something that happened or? Uh, it is 57683 for $549.92.
Attorney Captain?
That, those were damages to an automobile of which he was the owner and a city vehicle, um, backed into it.
Oh, okay. I was just curious. Yeah, thank you.
Alderman Sevick?
I tried to get to Jennifer earlier on this one. And it, if she could just explain the, um, well, here it is. Check 57632 to, to the Village of Fox Crossing. And it's about, um, an interest payment. Is that for the, the new retention pond or something or payment?
Is it 57623?
Yes.
Yes, this is for the stormwater pond, the Tako Pond. It's our principal and interest payment to the Village of Fox Crossing.
And is this payment a monthly payment?
We have a annual principal payment and then we have a interest payment twice a year.
Okay, thank you.
One in November as well.
Seeing no further discussion, there's a motion on the table for the accounts payable and payroll excluding check number 57790. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Okay, and then we have on the, on the floor, the motion to approve check 57790. Any further discussion? Alderman Sevick?
I'll move for that.
You don't need to move it. We just separated them. Okay, seeing no discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 6-0 with Alderman Nichols abstaining.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications for the 2015 through 17 licensing period. There it is. Do we? Oh, this is operators. We're on operators yet. So, so we have three recommended for approval for 2015. Do we have a motion? No one? Alderman Sevick?
I would, would like that the vice chair take this, but, um, move for the beverage operators license application for the 2015-2017 licensing period.
Is there a second? Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Item three is the beverage operators license applications for 2017 through 2019. That's the second half of the memo. I'm not gonna count all of them. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevick?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the beverage operators license application for the period of 2017 through 2019 licensing period.
So motion a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Okay, now we're on the ones that Debbie wanted to do. Item four is the liquor license applications recommended for approval for 2017 through 2018. It's the, um, the first set. Does anyone wish to make a motion? Alderman Sevick?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for the liquor license applications recommended for approval for the 2017 through 2018 licensing year.
So motion a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
I would have been prepared. I have my little note here someplace. I lost it here. Where did it end up? There it is. So we have one license that is recommended for denial. The recommendation from the police department is to deny the Class B license for Margaritaville Lounge LLC doing business as hammerheads on 6 Tako Street. Jennifer is here this evening and she, they did not pass a background check. Records show that there were multiple convictions which would constitute habitual offender. She does have the right for a hearing on this matter. And I guess we'd like to know if you're ready to have the hearing tonight or if you'd like to have it at a future council meeting. Jennifer, a few?
I guess I don't really know what that entails, like the hearing. Yeah, let's just do it tonight. That's fine.
So, attorney, do we need to have a motion before the hearing then? Or how do we do this? Okay, so I'm gonna turn this over to the attorney and let her...
In your packet was included, uh, the renewal alcohol beverage license application. And there, attached to it was a letter dated May 23rd, 2017, signed by Lieutenant Larry Bonneville, as well as a copy of City of Manasha policy guidelines for alcohol licenses. And there is a recommendation coming to the council that the alcohol license should not be renewed. And I would ask the police department then if they could provide comments on the non-renewal.
Chief Stecker, I'm sorry.
No problem. Uh, as indicated in the memo that was referenced by the city attorney on May 23rd, uh, there was three issues that were addressed. Two of them were convictions for serving or selling alcohol to an underage person back in July of 2015, as well as another offense in... back in July of two thousand fifteen, as well as another offense in January of two thousand sixteen. There's also a disorderly conduct charge in Outagame County. That case was filed on four, six of sixteen. And it looks like there was a disposition of that case on August fourth of two thousand sixteen. And there is also a couple pending cases which were in a deferred prosecution status. Those don't, those are something that the council's been, wanted to be aware of in the past, but it's not that we necessarily specifically count against it. A person has three or more of those offenses within the previous five years, based upon the council's guidelines, uh, our recommendation is to deny. In addition, there are two questions on the application. This isn't referenced. Those being six A and six B, asking if there is, since the filing of the last application, if there was any changes such as a conviction, or if there's any pending charges, and both of those questions were answered as no. As reference to the six A, the conviction of eight, four of sixteen would have been a conviction which took place in the last licensing period. Uh, so that was not disclosed. And then the B, the one that has the deferred prosecution, that's technically a pending charge, and that was not disclosed on it as well. So, that's why Lieutenant Bonneville had created the recommendation that's before you today.
Does a pending charge become part of the application or not?
I guess it don't.
Well, I mean, you're, you're listing pending potential charges, but she hasn't had her due process yet. And so, in a sense, to me, I understand why you bring them forward, but she hasn't had her day in court yet.
Correct. The pending...
And is it, is that pertinent to the application then? Whether she says yes or no, she hasn't been found guilty or innocent at this point.
The form itself is a state of Wisconsin form, and six B does ask if there are any current charges or offenses that are pending. That's nothing that we use as the litmus test of how many convictions a person has. So, the only things that we counted were the three actual convictions in the last five years. The only reason why we bring up this aspect is because that box was marked as no. A person, an applicant, should have marked that as yes if they do have a pending one. Not that that necessarily would be held against them, but it goes to the, the, uh, pureness of the application, I, I guess would be the best way to put it.
If I can ask, um, how do you pronounce your last name? Is it Almeda? Almeda Sandoval?
I just go by Almeda, but...
Almeda?
Yeah, that's okay.
You heard what was just spoken?
Yes.
And are there any disagreements with any of the convictions?
Not disagreements. I guess I just wanted to say that the first two, well, the only two for the underage drinking that we got, it was bartenders that we had previous when we had Margaritaville Lounge. And now we've changed over to Hammerheads, and it's either myself or Mark Ricker, and he's also on the LLC that bartend now. And being, I guess it's nothing against it, but the bartender gets a ticket and I get a ticket. And then this didn't help the disorderly conduct that I got. I got that, it was an ordinance in Outagame County. And, I mean, my record was clean before then, so it's like everything just came crashing down at once. And August of this year, the deferred prosecution agreement that I got, I've been complying with everything, so in August, I hope it'll just be dismissed.
And that's the disorderly conduct on four, six?
Calumet County, yep.
Oh, that's a Calumet County case?
Yes.
So, there are two disorderly conducts?
Yes.
Okay. Um, what are the circumstances surrounding the disorderly conduct in Outagame County?
I'm sorry?
How, well, how did you get it? Why did you get the disorderly conduct?
For an argument that I had.
And?
And the police were called.
So, I need some more information. Describe what happened.
I was arguing with my husband.
Okay, so it was, this wa, was it at home, or?
No, we were on the street. We were driving.
Okay.
And then we were arguing in front of the police officer.
Okay. And the two convictions for procuring and selling an alcoholic beverage to an underage person, I see there's one in two thousand fifteen.
Yes.
And did you say that, well, did you go and pay this one? Is that what happened?
Yes.
Okay, and the one in January of two thousand sixteen, that one you just paid as well?
Yes.
Okay.
I've paid all the fees for all of the, like, convictions, I guess, except the one in Calumet because it's pending.
Okay.
So, in August, once they dismiss it, or whatever they choose to do, then I can pay everything in full, but until then, I don't have, like, an actual set fee, I guess you could say.
And wha, what I was asking about these two citations, you didn't contest them or anything? You just went in and paid the whatever amount was on the ticket? Is that it?
Correct.
Okay.
It was two, so two bartenders that I had, um, and it was when the police do their, that we get a letter letting everybody know, hey, we're coming out to check, and that wasn't enough for them to check the ID, so that's why I didn't contest it.
Do you know what happened to the bartenders?
I fired them.
Okay.
All they get is a ticket, and I get my liquor license potentially revoked, so.
And can you talk about the application renewal form that you had signed? You, did you fill this out?
Yes, I did.
And on question six A, I don't know if you have a copy of that?
Not on me, but to be completely honest, I just used the copy that I had from the prior year, and I checked everything off, to be completely honest.
And so, are you saying that you did not read any of it?
Not fully. Not, well, I did read, like, enough of it, but not fully to the extent that I would have put yes or no. But for the pending one, I wouldn't have put yes either way because I wouldn't, I guess I don't know.
And so, you've had to fill these applications out before, right?
I currently have four different liquor licenses. I have Manasha, Appleton, Hilbert, and Kimberly.
And so, did you fill each one of them out the same way?
No. For this one, I just copied the last one, and the other ones, they were new. So, I went each, like, it was the first time having a liquor license.
Okay.
Whereas this one was just a renewal.
Mm-hmm.
So, I just took the copy and copied everything over. And then Kimberly, it's the first time I get it, so I had to fill, I mean, it was completely different. Start from scratch, basically, since I didn't have prior ones. So, that's my mistake for Manasha.
And you are aware that there is a background check that is done on?
Yes.
Folks?
Yes.
And is, do you have any explanation for, um, why you didn't put anything in there about your citations?
I don't.
Or your convictions?
I don't, to be honest, just that, I mean, I knew the background check was going to be conducted either way, so I didn't see it as anything more than an honest mistake.
And you're aware that on this form, you subscribe and swear that what's on here is true?
Yes.
And that there's a penalty of perjury if someone doesn't tell the truth on these forms?
Yes.
Says that right on the form? And you're aware that the, um, two offenses that you have for, um, underage, procuring or selling, um, an alcoholic beverage to an underage is something that would be looked at in a beverage license?
Yes.
And so, no explanation for why it wasn't talked about with the clerk or anything?
What do you mean, talked about?
You, you, did you tell the clerk about them?
No. I never, like, called her and said, hey, I got two tickets, but I know that Nina just, I mean, they sent it out to everybody.
Mm-hmm.
So, I just paid my fines and fired the bartenders.
I have no further questions.
Boy, the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, it was not Hammerheads at the time?
No.
Okay. Um, and you fired the two bartenders?
Yes.
More or less, you and the other person are pretty much bartending ninety percent of the time?
Yes.
Uh, your disorderly conduct, boy, I tell you, all you gotta do, if I've been, I've been there, so I know you just gotta raise your arm at the wrong time, you might be going to jail. Um, I, I feel bad for you on the disorderly conduct charges, but they're bringing up something that was a different bar, different circumstances, and this is why I come in and cry. They've put a lot of time and effort. They're trying to clean up the place and make a better environment. And because two of her previous bartenders that no longer work, or might not even bartend in the city, have determined that she cannot hold a license, and I take it that nobody else there can have the license, so you'd have to close down your business after everything you guys have done. Is that correct?
Correct. And it's a reserve license?
Yep.
So, if I remove, I own the building flat out, so if I were to remove myself from the sales permit number, then whoever, whatever tenant I get would have to pay ten thousand dollars. Then when they leave, I'd have to apply again and pay ten thousand, so.
You're in a bad spot. I hope there's some...
Very bad.
...consideration here. I wish your partner could have been here, but then you'd have to shut down tonight. Thank you for your time. Thank you. You've done a lot of nice work there, though, and...
Thank you for your time.
Are you finished, Alderman Collier? So, so the attorney tells me that this is a hearing at this point until there's, um, motion to either approve or deny, and we should be asking questions to either the owner of the establishment or herself, or the chief at this point. And then once there's a motion, then we could state other things, that are our opinions as to why or why not we should approve this. Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jennifer, were you on site when those underage drinking citations were issued? Were you there when the bartenders did it?
I was there after it happened. I wasn't there while it happened.
So, we had a license, you had a licensed bartender there?
Yes.
At that time? Okay. And so, you issued the citations afterwards, or in the mail?
In the mail.
Oh, okay. Next question I has, chief, is, we've had any problems with this establishment lately? We used to have...
The new establishment?
A little bit of history with them?
No.
Everything's been good? Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Savick?
I guess that was my question, too. I had concern if you were there on the night that the charges were brought against you, basically, and, um, it's kind of, to me, is a raw deal. And you're putting this predicament now because of that fact, that someone else served someone that they shouldn't have. And because you are the owner and responsible for that individual, you also got a ticket. So, I, I'm going to take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Someone wish to make a motion at this point? Alderman Taylor?
I had a question for the attorney. Can Jennifer put this in somebody else's name, or husband's name, or partner's name?
That really would be something she would have to talk to her own attorney. I can't give her legal advice.
Okay, but I'm saying for the city here, uh, is that something that, that could happen? That she doesn't, this last, uh, scenario was that she would lose her, uh, reserve license, and someone else would have to pay ten thousand dollars. But is there a way to avoid that?
Give the same, yeah. The answer was that she would have to consult her attorney, not, we, we can't give her legal advice, as she had said.
I'm not asking for legal advice. I'm just asking you, can she transfer a license, uh, in the city here to, to somebody else?
Can one transfer a license to her?
Yeah.
Debbie is going to explain how you would transfer a license.
Okay. Okay, transferring a license is not allowed with a reserve license. And that's what Margaritaville has right now, is a reserve license. You are not allowed to transfer. When you are issued a license, it's issued the same as a seller's permit. The seller's permit, we have to issue the license the same way that the seller's permit is issued. So, Department of Revenue issues businesses their seller's permit. They have to file it that way. And Jennifer, it's issued as an LLC, Margaritaville Lounge LLC. And Jennifer is one of the members, as is Mark Riker, is also a member of the LLC.
Okay, so...
If she, um, removes, if she removes her name from the LLC, the license, and the seller's permit number stays the same, then we would just do whoever the members of the LLC are.
Which is, uh, one other member, Mark something?
That is correct.
Okay.
But that's not our decision to make.
Right, but her name could be removed off, and Mark could have his name on it, and they could keep their reserve license?
The seller's permit number cannot change, and however the license is issued in the, with the same seller's permit number, that cannot change.
Okay. As the attorney said, I have a problem with, uh, the application, uh, with lying on the application on six B, and it's very clear. Our charges, and it's in bold print, then small print, for any, bold print, any offenses in bold print, presently small print, pending, bold print. And I don't know how clear the police department can ask that question, especially with bold print. It's telling you that, are there any charges for any offenses presently pending? That's a pretty simple question, and you check no, and apparently there's, uh, a few of these out there. Not just one, but a couple. And, uh, you know, that's, uh, lying on this application isn't good. Not to the community. It's not like you're going to pull something off, you know? Police department, they got computers. They, they know that, so I don't know.
So, I didn't do it, like, to lie. I didn't do it with the intent to deceive somebody. I just didn't read through it, but I didn't lie about it. If I knew that they were going to conduct a background check, I didn't go out of my way to try to hide something.
Well, it's very clear. Are there any charges for any offenses presently pending? In bold print. And you check no. To me, that's lying.
Okay.
Alderman Savick?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for the chief. This app, renewal application, was there anything on the back? Because, see, we don't, we didn't have a, a back.
These applications are actually filled out with the city clerk.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, I guess I'd have to defer...
Was there anything written on the back? Right. The only reason I ask that is because Alderman Taylor brought up a point. The only reason I ask that is because Alderman Taylor brought up a point of any kind of like explanations or anything, that it should be written on the back. There was nothing?
There's nothing. If you'd like, I'll get you all a copy of the backside. There was nothing on the backside.
There was nothing there, so that's fine, then. I'm okay, I don't need a copy.
Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if this is for the chief or for the clerk, has to do with our point system for the taverns. If they were to have this, let's say this was to be approved, and they were to have this, if somebody were to get another underage drinking or something like that, so, you know, we have a point system that gets assessed against the taverns, would this, does this start over with the renewal of the license, or does it just go from calendar day to calendar day from convictions or something?
I can read from the ordinance, they're charged 80 demerit points for traffic to underage persons, and those demerit points do carry over, because they will calculate up to 24 months. So, it does not go with each new application, it does carry over in up to 24 months.
And how many points does it take for them to have their license put in jeopardy?
Okay, any, 75 points, exceed 75 points in a 12-month period, and then 150 to 200 points in an 18-month, and then anything over 200 in a 24-month period.
So, the 2015 one is gone, the 2016 one is still on there as 75 points this time, and so that would actually go from the 2016 conviction, at this point, they would have two years to hit 200 points, but one more between now and maybe the end of the year, and they would be, they'd have their license in jeopardy, correct? Because that'd be 150 points?
In the 18-month period.
In the 18 months, right.
Yes. But I'd have to go back, we'd go back to, up to two years.
Up to two years, up to, for 200 points?
It actually says 24 months, so, you know...
Right. Okay, so, there's still a certain amount of risk, or if they get another ticket, their license is at risk, you know, if they get another citation within the next few months anyways.
I was just reading the ordinance, and those demerit points have to be assessed by the administration committee before they are counted against the license, so these were not assessed by, there was no hearing at the administration committee, and they were not assessed, so we would have to bring that before the administration committee at that point. We haven't done a assessment hearing for quite some time.
I don't recall, I think it was actually this facility that we've had that...
No, the last one was just down the street that we...
Oh, was it?
Did actually close for a period of time, and I think that was before either of us were on the council at that point.
No, well, no, there was one that...
Was that?
Yeah, and it was...
And it was just as we were both on the council?
Okay, so there is a little bit there yet, that if they get a citation, then they still are at risk. Okay, thank you.
What was that one? You were right, it was the same establishment, but it was, I was thinking, same location, yes, I should say, I was thinking of a different one that we had done as well. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I noticed on the bottom of the form, this is a Wisconsin Department of Revenue application, so it's a form provided by the Department of Revenue. My question may be for the clerk, and I'm making an assumption, is it safe to assume that other jurisdictions would use the same form for application?
Yes, we are required to use this form that's provided to us by the Department of Revenue. We do have the flexibility of other licenses that we can use our own forms, but this is the one that's recommended by the Department of Revenue.
Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sounds like there is some possibly legal work. Let's say you were denied tonight, you have a partner on your LLC, you'll have to speak with your attorney to see if you were denied, that your name somehow would be, whatever legal process it is to keep that license for your partner. So, if you are denied, you have to look into that process.
I think if I were to get denied, it would just close it down.
I'm sorry.
We'd be done, and I just put over $50,000 into it, but I'd be done. I wouldn't put my business that's in my name into a partner for an LLC and hope for the best. I would just shut it down.
Also, just shout out while you're here, Saturday night, I went by a couple times, and there was quite a few people standing by the front door smoking, and, you know, the state law is, you can't smoke within so many feet of the front of a building, so just wanna say, you know, it's not good to have a lot of people standing out front, you know, if they wanna go out back, nobody sees them, so, just a shout out.
At this point, are we ready to close the hearing, or Alderman?
I still have some questions here.
Sure.
I'm kind of following what Alderman Benner was talking about, and then I got confused when you said, oh, it was the same establishment. Are you saying you...
It was the same building, not the same establishment, sorry.
Building, not, okay.
Same building.
And it had, it had nothing to do with the individual here this evening?
That's exactly it. Except for that she was the owner of the building.
Gotcha, and that's, thank you, Arnie.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
I got very confused there for a second. All right.
Are you finished?
Taking all that into consideration, well, I can't close the meeting. Who closes it?
I need to close the hearing, and then we can make a motion if the council's ready to close the hearing. Alderman Collier would like to still ask, Alderman Taylor?
Yeah, I just have one quick question.
Sure.
A little advice, check, you got all this, you got all this money involved in your bar, check all the IDs, simple, pick the policy, that way you don't get stuck on another hook here and get into this point system. Check everybody, even if I come in with gray hair, check me.
Thank you.
Alderman Collier?
We talked about the administration not doing something, I don't know if that has, if they would've made a big difference, the point program, I was never a big fan of it unless you really get crazy with it, but, once again, it was different people, she's trying to make a living, the license is in her name, she will not be able to remove that license with that number and give it to her partner, I'm pretty much 99% sure on that, just because of what's happening to Nina recently, I got a little insight, but I think that she should be looked at in a different way. She did fire the bartenders, and a lot of bartenders get a second chance, and I always say that, but in this case, she terminated them, that's what she said. The disorderly conducts, I got, you know, it's, all you gotta do is blow in the wind, and you can get a ticket, especially when it's two male and a female arguing on the street about something that didn't happen at home, and it's a discretion of a police officer, and the easiest way is to give them a ticket, and that'll settle the problem. This is harsh, I hope you take that in consideration when you vote. This is the toughest one I've ever looked at, and thank you, and it's all I can say.
Okay, this is supposed to be for questions to either staff or the applicant? Does anyone have...
Close the hearing, then.
Does anyone have, I know Alderman Taylor's light popped up, too, did you have questions for the staff or the, okay, no one else? Okay, so we'll close the hearing at this point, and we'll accept a motion for either approval or denial. Alderman Sevanek?
Like Arnie said, this is a real tough one, too. I, what I try to do is put myself in the individual's shoes, and, and I keep going back to the fact that you are responsible for your bar, and that, and that, thing is, is someone else did you a bad deed, and you had to pay the consequences because you also received the citation, even though you weren't there. If I had found out that you were there, I would, wouldn't have a problem right now denying this, but at this time, I'm gonna make a motion to renew your alcoholic beverage license application.
So, motion and a second, is there discussion? Alderman Benner?
Mr. Mayor, chief, did you, do you know if she indeed was on site for either one of those, or was she definitely gone?
The hearing's closed.
Oh, all right, is that right?
So, what was, what has already occurred, or what you've heard makes sense, is what you have to use?
You can't add anything after a hearing's closed.
Is there any further discussion? Alderman Taylor?
I've heard from Alderman Collier and Sevanek, and I could excuse things that happened, bartenders serving somebody that they shouldn't, or nowadays with a disorderly, a little different than years ago, but I go back to this form here, this is what our police department has to look with, and if it isn't truthful on here, I can't accept that they lied to our police department, and they're lying to our government, and I have a problem with that.
Alderman Nichols?
I understand we have a business operating in the downtown, and that I'm a proponent of businesses in the downtown, at the same time, I feel this council has a responsibility in maintaining safety for residents and people who visit our community. Over the years, our police department has worked diligently to build relationships within the bar community to prevent the sale or procurement for underagers, and we have a denial, a recommended denial before us this evening because that activity occurred. We also have, there are also incorrect statements on the application, an application which is used in all jurisdictions that the applicant has applied for a license in, and so I, for those reasons, I have a hard time trusting that the license holder can operate with integrity, and therefore, I cannot support this application.
Is there anyone else? Alderman Benner?
We repeat the motion, please.
Moved by Alderman Sevanek, second by Alderman Collier, to renew the liquor license application for Margaritaville Lounge LLC.
Attorney Captain, did you...
I was just gonna mention that since we are now aware that there is a citation out there, that we would be bringing something to the administration committee for, if it's approved, for assessing points, just so that you're aware. We didn't have that information up until we just received the, this report, so, just to let you know.
Alderman Collier?
So, you're telling me that she's got a pending case in another county, and even if we approve this tonight, because she might be convicted of a disorderly conduct...
No, no, no.
No, not that.
Okay. No. So, typically, we would not bring those point assessments until, until those citations are, are they found guilty, or, or claim no, or no contest to them, and then we would bring them forth to the administration committee. So, they were quite a while ago.
15 minutes, 16 to renew. It won't be on there, just the...
Further discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, just to clarify, the motion again is to renew?
To approve the renewal, yes.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please? I know it's not 4-4. There's seven of us, so it can't be 4-4.
Motion feels on roll call, 4-3, 3-4.
So, being not approved is not the same as being denied?
Correct.
So, what?
Need a motion to deny?
Okay, so if we, we can, we have two options, I would assume, to make a motion to deny, or to leave it on the table and do something at a future meeting, or, okay, we need a motion to deny. The attorney is recommending a motion to deny, if someone wishes to make that motion? Alderman Nichols?
I move to deny the liquor license application.
Is there a second? So, motion and a second for denial, do we have discussion? Seeing none, we'll need a...
I have some discussion.
Alderman Sevanek?
I kind of, I keep going back to also the demerit point thing. We didn't get to that point, and it should've been done, and it would've been done by this new council, it should've been done by the past council, and I would've been more comfortable renewing it, and then having that hearing, and then having those points assessed, and that would've taken us to the appropriate direction, one way or another. That's why I voted the way I did. I'm gonna continue to feel as though she should have her license until we do our job up here, so I'm not going to support the current motion on the floor, and I feel she should've got her license.
Any further discussion? Alderman Taylor?
I'd like to know how the attorney feels on that statement.
Do you have an opinion on that statement or not?
As far as an ability to, if it was approved, to monitor? Is that the question?
Question, I guess, is Alderman Sevanek said we didn't do our job up here with the points assessment, should've been done with the last council, is that true?
Did you want to answer that, or...
Whenever we become aware of a citation, then we would bring it to the administration committee, that's correct. And so, these citations should have come before the administration committee at that time, when a conviction occurred.
And is there, where did we miss that in the process?
I'm not, I, the only time I see them is if someone pled not guilty. So, those are the only times that I know about a citation that was given, because if someone just... Um, I'm not, I, the only time I see them is if someone pled not guilty. So those are the only times that I know about a citation that was given because if someone just goes and pays a citation, well, they pay it over at municipal court and I'd have no idea that anyone even got one or that they, that they paid it. So in the future, we'll have to have some better communication so that we know when a citation is, when someone has pled no contest and just paid a citation.
And that's what happened with this?
True. With those two citations. And that's why I had asked her because I had no idea that, you know, she had paid them and she had indicated that she had just gone and, and paid them. And so that's why I say what would have come before is just the assessment of points. I don't know that you'd be in any different position. That's not really the issue here today. The issue here today is the person who is applying for a license is considered a habitual offender because of the three convictions within such a short period of time. So according to the policy that was established by the common council, that would indicate that the person should be denied a, a license. On renewals, we generally look at, you know, what happened from the point of the last license period to the next license period. So in other words, we don't go back in history unless a person's a habitual offender and you have a whole slew of, you know, every, so many years or every other year, there's several convictions or something. But in this particular case, this, the convictions occurred within a short period of time and so that would, she would be considered a habitual offender for this round.
And filling this out incorrectly is considered somewhat obstruction?
That's something separate and we wouldn't be dealing with that.
That's completely-
Can I say anything?
All we're dealing with are the convictions.
So this, this application has nothing to do with ever on this license renewal tonight?
What we're talking about is habitual offenders, so it's the three convictions.
Okay, and, and where does this, where do we stand?
Well, we didn't know that there were outstanding convictions. Now we know them because there was a background check that was done that showed since the, over that period of time, that there are three convictions.
Okay.
In recent in time.
Okay.
That substantially relate to the-
And this has no bearing tonight, this application, that it was filled out incorrectly?
That's a separate issue.
The, the recommendation from the police department was for the habitual offender. It wasn't to deal with that, but I believe, yes, you could consider that as well, correct? I guess not for this purpose, she said.
Will this come back at another time then?
If you approve it tonight, you approve it. If you deny it, you deny it. So no, it won't come back. It'll, this won't come back again for a year then, if it is approved.
So that is no bearing tonight on if we approve or disapprove, because this was filled out improperly?
The attorney just said no.
No. It's not obstructing this body or the police department by filling it out incorrectly. Is that correct?
Comment any further on that or not? Looks like no.
It doesn't-
It doesn't apply at this point.
And is there any reason why, why we have this if you don't fill it out directly? Apparently it's not written, paper's written on that, is that what we're saying?
I'm, I'm not sure why that wasn't included. Oftentimes, it is included in the police department's recommendation if they found something that was inaccurate on there. I'm not sure why it wasn't in this point, but, but their recommendation is denial based upon-
I just wanna get this clear tonight before we, the police department is recommend, recommending the denial of the liquor license application for Margaritaville Lounge LLC, Hammerheads, Sixth Stakel Street, Jennifer Agent, or, okay. So they are saying they recommend denial of this, this application shows that she does not meet the criteria under the guidelines of liquor license. It says attached to this memo are the liquor license application.
So you need to make your decision with the information at hand?
I've tried to get this clear. You're seeing that this is written different than what I'm, with the application. What is this, what are, what is this saying here tonight, Mayor?
Says the police department is recommending the denial of the liquor license application. Background check showed she does not meet the criteria under the liquor license guidelines. Attached are the guidelines.
Okay.
And then if you read the next-
The attached guidelines.
And then if you read the letter that went to her, it says, "I have determined that you have three separate ordinance violations within the last five years." And it goes on.
Again, it says nothing about incorrectly filling this up?
It doesn't say anything about that. It says, "Under the City of Manassas policy guidelines for liquor licenses, you are considered a habitual offender and do not qualify for a license because you have been convicted of three offenses which substantially relate to the liquor license within the previous five years." So that's what their recommendation is, that they do not meet the guidelines because they are considered a habitual offender.
Do you, do you think that this should have been added, a statement stating that this was also incorrectly filled out?
It doesn't, that's not what they're recommending and it doesn't matter what I think.
Okay.
I'm not voting on this this evening.
I understand that and again, I'm just trying to get this clear, okay? Do you think that should have been, is it possible that should have been added to this? That the application, that has something to do with it? I think that language should be cleared up in the future, that, that, filling this out incorrectly and it doesn't carry over to, to this, I think there's a problem there. So I think we should relook at that. But if that's the case tonight, I'll probably have to change my vote because if it was this case, if it was this application causing the problem, I'd vote against it. But apparently it isn't, so, thank you.
Alderman Collier?
Gotta try to make sure I get this right. The liquor license that you have now with Hammerheads, you got last July 1st, you guys opened about August or something, a little later.
It was October.
Okay.
October of 2016.
I don't know for sure, but according, you do not have any problems with serving minors. You've been pretty-
Since we opened, no.
Okay, the hearing is done, so we can't gather further information at this point. You have to make your decision based upon the information that we get at the hearing.
My complaint at the hearing then is your rules are flawed and the message you send is, is two-sided because I cannot see, Parker Johns, and believe me, when you send somebody in, they look like they're 25 and you'd sell them, everybody here would sell them alcohol and not ask for a check, even though the law says you're supposed to check everyone. It's impossible sometimes. And if Parker Johns had a big going and you sent-
We shouldn't be talking about another business. You can call, talk about-
Another establishment would have another, send somebody in here as big as something like that, you're gonna tell me you shut them down if they had three violations? I think you'd put them on probation. I think there's always options for probation and other things and it should be considered. Thank you.
That's what the state of Wisconsin did for me. I mean, I went in front of a judge and I said, "I have an ordinance. I'm asking, please, this is my second offense. Can you please give me a deferred agreement?" I mean, and they said it was fine, yet I can't, like, I'm trying to bring business. I'm trying to, you know, make a living and I can't get a second chance with the state, with the city of Manassas, like-
Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. It has to be understood that these are our guidelines. These are rules that we set and I respect those rules and I would definitely follow them, but not everything is black and white. And we acted, we act here as a quasi judicial body. So as an individual quasi judge, I made a decision based on whether this individual was an habitual offender or not, under my interpretations of what had happened. I didn't see her as an individual that did this intentionally or allowed this to happen in her establishment. Someone else did. I understand she's responsible for that, but as that judge, I've decided that this is for her, her renewal, for her business. And I then threw those two out. And then I feel she's not an habitual offender and that is why I voted the way I did.
Alderman Zalinski?
I couldn't say it any better than Alderman Sevenik. That's basically how I voted for this and how I will vote for this. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Again, my hangup was the, the application. We're past that. Do yourself a favor, go online, get some buttons printed for your bartenders that say, "We card everybody."
Okay. Alderman Taylor?
I know, but send people in.
Quaint of order, you're not, we're not giving her advice.
I'm just talking to you.
Quaint of order. We're not giving people advice this evening.
And check everybody and send people in and see if they're checking.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Before I ask my question, I'll ask if it's appropriate. And that is to ask the chief to explain, so everyone's on the same page, why the application was recommended for denial.
Apparently, that's a hearing question. It's complete at this point, so.
Well, perhaps I could read it from the memo?
Sure, and I just did that as well, but-
Okay. It's determined that there are three separate ordinance violation convictions within the last five years. These include two cases for which there was, there were convictions of procuring or selling an alcoholic beverage to an underage person on a date in 2015 and a date in 2016 in the city of Manassas. There are also two convict, one conviction for disorderly conduct and a deferred prosecution for disorderly conduct. And these offenses are substantially related to the license for which, or for the license that has been applied for. And under the City of Manassas policy guidelines for liquor licenses, the applicant is considered a habitual offender and does not qualify for a license because of the three convictions in the last five years. Thank you.
Alderman Sevenik?
Earlier, the city attorney indicated to us that the individual did not plead guilty, but did, oh geez, I'm sorry, I went blank. Paid the fine, but basically when you do that, you're, you're pleading no contest. So, that's where I stand. If she would have went in and said, "I'm guilty, I was there, this shouldn't have happened," that'd be different. That's why we have to make these calls.
Okay, I see no further discussion. I just wanna make sure everyone knows what the motion is and it's been a while, so.
Moved by Alderman Nichols, seconded by Alderman Benner to deny the liquor license for Margaritaville Lounge LLC.
Okay, so we'll take a roll call vote at this point? This is for denial of the liquor license?
Motion fails on roll call, three-four. It fails.
Do you wanna reconsider it, Alderman Sevenik? We can do that.
Yeah. The motion is second for reconsideration.
Okay, if I can just interject?
Sure.
If I can ask, what is the motion to reconsider? Is the motion to reconsider the vote that was taken to approve?
It was Alderman Sevenik just, okay. We just need to clarify your motion, Alderman Sevenik.
To reconsider which motion?
The, the motion we just had.
So the motion to deny?
To deny, based on the fact that Alderman Taylor pushed the wrong button in error.
I know the attorney is going to say that we shouldn't be doing that, but I'm going to override that decision and allow it to happen.
Chair ruled, so.
So, okay, so just, do we, we need a motion? We need to, hold on, hold on. The first, first, we're voting on the motion to reconsider, allowing you to reconsider it, so I don't know if, let's, let's clear, let's clear this out. Just to make sure that everyone knew what we were voting on. We're voting on the motion to reconsider. This will allow the vote to happen again.
Motion carried on roll call, six-one.
Okay, and now the original motion to deny is back on the floor and we could vote on that again. So right now, the motion that's on the floor is to deny the liquor license. So if, before we, before you do this, if you say yes, you're denying the license, if you say no, you're not approving it, but-
You're not approving it, or denying it.
So, but if you say yes, you're denying the license. Has everyone voted the correct way now before we do this?
Then we're gonna be in the press maybe after this.
Yeah, I, I can already see where we're going here. Looks like we're good.
Motion fails on roll call, two-five.
Hold on, before we go. Attorney Captain, what are our options at this point? We have a motion, we, we have had a motion fail both to approve and deny this license, so.
I can make a motion.
Let's hold, I'd just like to have the attorney tell us what our options are first. Okay, so I just wanted to make sure, but the attorney stated that someone should make a motion to reconsider one of the two votes. Is that what you were planning on doing, Alderman Sevenik?
Yep. So at this point, because things have been indecisive, we need to reconsider one direction or the other and I will restate my prior motion, but at this time, I'd like to reconsider to allow to, I'm losing my spot here. I allow for the renewal. I allow for the renewal.
So, did you want to reconsider the first vote to approve the motion? Approve the liquor license? You would have to be on the prevailing side of that motion. So, it would have to be one of the four people that voted against it that would have to reconsider that motion.
You're absolutely correct, Mayor.
So, you would not be able to make that motion, Alderman Sevenek?
I am, yep, you're correct.
But someone else would be if they... The four that would be able to...
He would be...
Would be Alderman Taylor, Alderman Nichols, Alderman Grady, or Alderman Benner. Would be the four that could make that if one of them wished to do that.
Be the one to approve the renewal.
Does anyone wish to do that? Oh.
Anyone wish to renew?
If you... No one else appears to want to do that. Alderman Taylor?
I will make a motion for renewal.
You'd make a motion to reconsider the motion to renew, recommend a...
I'll make a motion to reconsider the renewal.
Recommend approval of the renewal of the license?
The license for Margaritaville Lounge LLC, Hammerheads, Sixth Tacon Street, Manassha.
So, anyone can second, correct? Okay, so, I don't know if I heard the motion correctly, but the motion was to reconsider the previous motion to recommend approval. I mean, to approve the motion. Approve the liquor license, we'll get this eventually.
Reconsider.
Renewal, yes. Correct? Is that what your motion was, Alderman Taylor?
Yes, as stated by you.
Okay. Well, that may... That might be a little roundabout then. Okay, so, right now, we have a motion to reconsider on the floor. You're just voting on reconsideration. Alderman Nichols?
I lost the roadmap.
Okay. So...
Read the motion.
So, this is a motion to reconsider the original motion to approve the license that failed.
That's my question, approval or renewal?
Approval.
Are they the same or different?
To approve the renewal of the liquor license.
Yes. This is just can... Are you going to allow someone to change their vote that they took earlier this evening?
Okay, I'm kind of back on the road.
Okay. So, this is just reconsideration. It's not the actual motion to approve or deny at this point. So, no further discussion? Could we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Motion to reconsider carried on roll call 6-1.
So, the motion on the floor at this point is to approve the renewal of the liquor license for Margaritaville LLC. Alderman Seven?
That will be my motion at this time for... To approve the renewal.
That's what's on the floor right now, the original motion. You don't need to restate it.
Oh, so we don't? Okay.
Nope. So, any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 5-2.
We have one more liquor license-related item on the agenda, the renewal of the outdoor alcohol beverage permit applications.
Mayor, can I make a request that I... There are a handful of us that understood what happened, and I'm sure that the individual that's here tonight doesn't know what happened, and I'd ask that the chief talk with her and let her know what happened this evening.
We did just renew your license.
Your license has been renewed.
Oh, I think you have.
Okay.
Can I go?
So, yeah, the... Okay, that's fine. So, the next item that's on the agenda is the outdoor alcohol beverage permit applications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Seven?
Is that all we do, is deal with alcohol?
And then I'm gonna ask that we can skip forward after this.
Uh, Mayor, at this time, I'll move for the approval of the outdoor alcohol beverage permit applications for 2017 and 18 for this licensing... Or for that licensing year.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is Alderman Collier seconded? Is there any discussion? Do we need a roll call vote on this? Oh. Could we have a roll call vote, please? I didn't know how to put them up on the board if need be. I have the other half, so...
Okay, thank you.
We have a roll call vote?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
I'm gonna... Since we have three people in the audience waiting for the public works agenda, and we also have a recess floating around in here, I'm going to ask if there would be any objections to moving to item O to recess to committees, and then we will come back to the final items on the council all at once. Alderman Seven?
Mayor, at this time, we'll move... I'd like to move to item O and recess into committees.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand at recess. Thank you.